Okay, thank you, Mr. City Clerk. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Tuesday, August 12th, 2008, joint meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency. Mr. City Clerk, could you call the roll?
For council, council members in Jarian?
Here.
Montero? Weaver?
Here.
Yusefian?
Here.
Mayor Draymond?
Here.
And for the redevelopment agency, please. Agency members, Draymond?
Here.
Montero? Weaver?
Here.
Yusefian?
Here.
Chairman Njarian?
Here.
Thank you. Could we hear the, uh, we hear your report, please, Mr. City Clerk.
The agenda for the August 12th, 2008, joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency was postponed on Thursday, August 7th, 2008, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you very much, and we have a number of items here. Let's, uh, let's start with the item at one, please. A and B.
One is Director of Finance regarding reinstatement amendment to the Cooperation and Reimbursement Agreements between the City of Glendale and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency for the San Fernando Road Corridor Redevelopment Project Area Startup. At one A is a council resolution authorizing reinstatement of the amendment of six cooperation and reimbursement agreements, and at one B is our agency resolution authorizing reinstatement amendment of six cooperation reimbursement agreements.
Okay, thank you. You know what? Let's go ahead and hear the item at two, A, B, C, and D as well. We might just go ahead and do that.
They are distinctly different.
They are different. And just for while we're out of break and we're doing a little housekeeping here, Mr. City Attorney, uh, item one A is a council resolution?
That is correct.
Council item, and item B is an agency?
That is correct.
Okay, and we will be voting on those separately?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
All right, very good. Uh, yes, Mr. Yusefian?
I move to, uh, for council, move one A.
Second?
Yeah, we have a motion and a second. All right. Uh, let me just briefly take a look at... Mr. City Clerk, some of these are not identified as to what, which of these general items there?
They are all for the...
Some say, they are.
Is there anyone who...
Is there anyone who turned in a speaker card that is not, that is speaking on this item?
Accountants, perhaps, auditors.
You never know.
I think we've never known.
All right. Some are not indicating as to whether or not you're speaking on item two or one, or it just says nothing, so, just want to make sure we're not overlooking anybody who wants to speak. All right, very good. We have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion for my colleagues? I'm hearing none. Mr. City Clerk?
Council members in Jarian?
Yes.
Montero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Mayor Draymond?
Yes.
Do you move for agency? Second?
Roll call.
Agency members, Draymond?
Yes.
Montero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Chairman Njarian?
Yes.
All right. Yes, Mr. Yusefian?
There is something that is beeping, and I don't know what it is, but it's driving me nuts.
It is high pitched, too.
Yes. So if somebody has a cellphone or something?
I think it's the singer from the previous, uh, he's out hitting high notes or something. It is very high pitched and...
I think it's me.
It's gone.
Thank you.
Someone's blowing a dog whistle out there, apparently.
All right. All right. All right, Mr. City Clerk, can we hear item two, A, B, C, and D?
Item two is Director of Parks Recreation and Community Services regarding report providing options for funding the construction of an adult recreation center, A R C project, and requesting approval of plans and specifications for the project. At two A is agency motion directing staff to prepare findings for use of agency funds for the construction of the A R C project. To B is council resolution adopting plans and specification number three-two-two-zero and directing the city clerk to advertise for bids. And at C is council resolution appropriating $2,800,000 to provide funds for the construction of the A R C project. And at D is council motion providing direction to staff regarding redesign to one of the three reduced scope options for the A R C project. That's all under two.
Okay, thank you, Mr. City Clerk. Mr. Chief Assistant City Attorney, um, just for housekeeping purposes, again, I like to do this just so the public can follow along if they're interested. Uh, item two A is the agency motion, and items B, C, and D are all council items, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and can B, C, well, let's leave it at that. All right. Uh, thank you very much. I do have a number of cards. Uh, do I have any comment or input from my colleagues before we go to Mr. Chapchin and then to the public? No. Mr. Chapchin?
Thank you, Mayor Draymond, and members of the City Council and Redevelopment Agency. Um, back in November 2005, we came to you with several different options for the Adult Recreation Center. Uh, at that time, um, we chose to place the, uh, the Adult Recreation on Louise. The budget at that time was about ten point, um, I think it was 10.15. Uh, subsequently, we went through plan, the plan development, plan check. Turns out right now, to build the, uh, the 18,000 square foot facility, um, it would take about $12.5 million or $12.15 million. We have a budget shortfall, and I'd like to call up Dave Ahearn, the C I P Administrator. We're here really to ask you to help fund that, that gap with redevelopment, uh, agency money. Um, I'll turn it over to Dave. Dave can give a brief background on it. We have a PowerPoint. We'll try to keep it as brief as possible, um, and if there's some additional information that the City Council wants, Dave does have some additional PowerPoint, uh, slides.
Hardly wait for the additional?
Well, it's, it's going to be very brief. It's not, um, it's not going to be long. Um, Dave?
Sure. Um, Mayor Draymond, members of the agency, the project before you today is for funding of the Adult Recreation Center, what we commonly refer to as the A R C project located at Louise in Colorado.
Excuse me, Mr. Ahearn, could we get the lights?
Yes.
Very hard to see.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Ahearn.
Thank you. Um, in terms of project status, the, the proposed project is, uh, been through a number of, of versions of, of plan design, and the design before you today, um, that you're being asked to adopt plans and specifications for, is the plan that the, the council reviewed and approved previously. The photo on the screen is, um, we believe about 1950. Uh, we're, we're judging from the age of the cars with that, as it's an undated photo. Um, as Mr. Chapchin said, uh, the, the City Council previously approved 10.5 million dollars, 10.15 million dollars in funding for this project. The project estimate is for 10 or 12.15 million dollars, so we have a $2 million funding gap from our, our estimate for the project. The, the slide up currently shows a better depiction of, of where the, the site is. It's within the downtown redevelopment project area. It's governed by the downtown specific plan in terms of zoning. Because it's in the downtown redevelopment project area, or the central project area, it's eligible for redevelopment funding, and we're coming to, to the council and the agency today to ask for that funding. Um, the, the plans and, and specifications are ready for bidding. As we've said, we have a, an approximate $2 million funding shortfall for this project, and briefly, the reasons for this shortfall, um, can be categorized in three areas. First is, uh, the plan that is now ready to go out to bid has been refined and developed into construction documents, so we're able to get a much better handle on what those costs might be. We've, in terms of getting the project to that phase, we've, um, increased the, the available onsite parking, handicap ramps, handicap parking, trash enclosures, electrical transformer pads, maintenance buildings, um, drive aisles, um, and other, other improvements that are code issues. Um, so that's one portion of, of the issue that's driving the funding. Second issue that's driving the funding gap is cost escalation between when you last saw this and today, and our estimate based on that escalation of 4% in '05-'06, 2.5% in '06-'07. Um, so somewhere in the neighborhood of a 9% to 10% cost increase, and that, that gets us to our, our $2 million gap. Our cost estimate for this project is a conservative estimate. Uh, by conservative, we're taking a worst-case scenario. We have been seeing much more favorable bidding, uh, in the bidding environment for public works projects, but we're not, um, at a place right now where we'd be, um, conservative in terms of presenting that, that guest estimate to you. So we're moving forward with the engineer's estimate for funding, and that's the 12.15 million dollars. Uh, to address the funding gap, we've identified, uh, two options. Clearly, there are many options. Uh, we've just prepared two for you. One is to fund the gap with $2 million in redevelopment agency funds. Second option for addressing this funding gap involves revising the scope of the project, and we've provided you with three options for revising the scope of the project. Each option reduces the scale of the project, and, and that reduction in scale, uh, has consequences to it that we can go into in detail if you'd like that kind of information. So, to quickly summarize, what, what we're recommending to you today is using $2 million in redevelopment agency funds to augment the existing 10.15 million dollars, and we're asking you to approve the plans and specifications. We have a more detailed PowerPoint presentation that we can go through for you if you'd like that. We have the project manager here, Mr. Kasabian, who has, um, done all the work on this project for the past two years. Um, he's really our expert on the project, and he would go through that presentation for you. We also have staff here from the Recreation Programs and Community Services, Ms. Bellotti and her staff. They run the programs in that facility that serve our seniors, and they can answer any questions that you might have about, uh, capacity and demand for services and things of that nature. Uh, redevelopment agency staff is here, uh, and they can certainly answer your questions from a redevelopment standpoint. So, um, are, we're recommending the agency approve the additional $2 million in funding. We're available to answer questions, and we're certainly available to go through the rest of the presentation or stand down and answer any questions you may have.
Okay, well, stand down, eh? All right. Thank you, Mr. Ahearn, and thank you, Mr. Chapchin. Um, uh, let me see if my colleagues have any comments before we go to the public.
Oh, wait.
Wait. Mr. Weaver?
No.
Okay. All right, let's get to it, then. Our first speaker, and, uh, and by the way, because of the hour, we're going to be creeping up on our council meeting, I'm going to limit this to two minutes. So, uh, rather than three, because of the number of cards. Uh, Mr. City Clerk, uh, did you get that? Okay, all right. Our first speaker is George Robert Jaffray Fall Jr., followed by Nancy Kent.
Good afternoon. My name is George Robert Jaffray Jr. I go by Bob. We have a resolution to the Glendale City Council, August 12th, 2008, from Spar Heights. Uh, you have copies. We seniors at Spar Heights Community Center are opposed to cutting back the facilities plan for the Adult Recreation Center, especially those planned for seniors. We believe existing facilities should not be torn down, but new facilities should be added that could be extended in the future. In addition, we're concerned that more and reserved parking, including accessible handicap parking, be available for seniors. On the backside, you see 80 signatures. Uh, one last signature, a gentleman before, one, after I got the copies made, he signed all nine copies by hand and went through, "How many copies more are there?" So, you have Deacon Don France at the end, in his own signature. Now, we seniors at Spar Heights Community Center appealed to you before to give us more parking against the plans of our city manager, who had, uh, view of the joint project, uh, in mind with the elementary school. Uh, he had the idea to cut back parking, and the Sydney, City Account, uh, Council allowed him to take it out on us because of our opposition to the joint use project. And it was done in concrete, permanently, by putting in a 12 to 14-foot sidewalk along the north side instead of a reasonable one with our additional parking. Now, seniors are again appealing to you not to allow the city to hurt seniors by providing less than planned. Don't tear down what we have. Do provide more facilities. Do provide more and reserve parking, perhaps, reserve parking placards so seniors can get to the facilities. Therefore, we prefer serious consideration of option one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jaffray. Nancy Kent, followed by Margie Juraski?
Nancy Kent?
Juraski, pardon me, Juraski.
President of Southeast Glendale. This project includes demolishing the four tennis courts at Louise in Colorado. I am not a tennis player, but ever since I, ever since I heard these courts will be demolished, I regret Glendale will lose the recreation landmark of people playing tennis at this corner. Much of the land that's now used by tennis players, even at 10 or 11 at night, and near the most densely populated area of Glendale, is to become a drive-through lane to drop people off. Wait. People can be dropped off in one of the three small parking lots that will be around this building. Is there enough open space west of the four tennis courts to retain the courts, erase the drive-through lane and the strip of landscaping east of it, and build west of the tennis courts? If it doesn't fit, make it a two-story building. The library and armory are both two-story, so it would be compatible with the neighborhood. At the previous hearing, the mitigation for losing these tennis courts was to arrange for public use of the Glendale High Courts. I don't think that's been arranged, and a big chunk of city money was to be spent to improve the Glendale High Courts. I heard the city might build courts at Fremont Park, but that's a completely different part of the city. In tight economic times, let's respect the cliche, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it," or "Don't demolish it and then spend money to replace it elsewhere." Glendale has demolished Verdugo Plunge and the pool at Pacific Park. Verdugo Plunge was replaced by a parking structure. Land used for recreation should not be changed to land for automobile traffic. It's proposed to use redevelopment fund, money for the funding gap. Redevelopment money is supposed to reduce blight. If you replace the pleasant sight of people playing tennis with a drive-through lane for automobiles, in my opinion, you are increasing blight rather than decreasing it, and I hope the City Council will require that this be a lead silver building, as is mentioned briefly in the staff report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kent. Margie Juriski, followed by Anita Priceler.
My name's Margie, Margie Juriski. I live in Glendale, and I've been attending a senior center for over 14 years. I now work as a volunteer at the center, serving, and I also work in the office. I'm in favor as a volunteer. I'm in favor of this new, uh, senior center to be built because we need a new nutritional center building. The old one, even if it's fixed up, will, and be refurbished, it will, um, cost more money to build a new one. And, uh, it will cost more to bring everything up to code than to build the new building also. This building is obsolete. It is too small for the seniors that do come. We need a larger fitness room so that we don't step all over each other's feet when we exercise and have different events. It would be nice to have all services in one building and not two as it is now. It is too spread out. If you go to eat, you have to go to the one building, and for other services, you go to another building. It would be more practical to have everything in one building. In many cases, if the weather is hot or cold, or even rainy, many seniors will not go to the other building. Many seniors can't walk well. It should be, um, it should all be all under one roof, if possible. It would be nice to have a swimming pool like all the other senior centers do have. All in all, I'm in favor of going ahead with the senior center and not waste any more time. I have waited a long time for, for it and hope it, hope to get a new building soon. I am also speaking in behalf of my colleagues. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anita Priceler, followed by Erin Amercanian.
My name is Anita Priceler. You guys all kind of scare me.
I'm sorry. We, we have that effect on each other, too, but, uh, what are you going to do?
Uh, I've been attending the exercise classes at the center for nine years, and for nine years, I've been hearing about a new center. I've got to tell you, the class keeps growing. Today, we had as many as 40 men and women signed up. You have a sign-up sheet here. And, uh, most of these people, this is the only exercise we get. I know I'm not disciplined enough to do it myself. If I, if, it can get fairly comical and sometimes dangerous with 40 people plus swinging their arms and legs at each other. After class, I volunteer during renters' and homeowners' tax, uh, rebates for seniors, and when I don't have a client, I usually go over to the New Americana. And when I return to the center for lunch, it's the one balanced meal that I get per day. I'm single, single, and I'm apt to go home, flop in front of the TV, and eat popcorn. In the afternoon, I volunteer at the Glendale Red Cross. Though I live in Eagle Rock, I do spend most of my time and money in Glendale. I've made a lot of cherished friendships at the center. We all know how important that is for us old folks. Exercise, balanced meals, friendships, volunteering, these are all very important for our physical and mental health. A lot of people on this list of attending, attending this class also, uh, go there for their meals and for the friendship. I've looked at all three proposals, and the one retrofitting the old dining room, that's just a stopgap measure. It's, it's like spending, we spend a lot of money repairing the air conditioning in the administration building, and that barely works. In fact, we need fans, uh, just to help with the air. We call it a cooling center, but it's barely that. It's an old building, and will be, that and the dining room are old buildings, and they're going to be, need to be redone in about five years anyway. The whole building, both of them, needs to be brought up to code.
Priceler, your time is up, so if you could conclude, please.
Okay. Let's do it right. Save the money in the long run. Let's not leave a debt of inadequate center for the next generation, and gentlemen, let's be remembered as a visionary council.
Thank you, Ms. Priceler. There are often arms and legs swinging around up here, too, that scare us, so, we understand. Erin Amercanian, followed by Julie Feind.
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Elan Da Mirchanian. I'm, uh, coming from the, uh, Glendale, uh, Recreation Center. But my colleagues, maybe 60 people, they couldn't come here all, and they, all of them signed this paper, and I give it the, uh, City Clerk's request. And I'd like to read something. Honorable mail, members of the City Council and members of the Parks and Recreation Commission. It has come to our attention that after 14 years of talks about a new senior facility, a decision will be made on August 12th, 2008, which will decide the fate of the Adult Recreation Center and the new development project. We residents of Glendale, the citizens who spent countless hours at the Adult Recreation Center urge you to approve the plans for the project in its entirety without omitting any of the wonderful facility in its plans. We feel that the facility will be left incomplete, and it will not be able to meet the needs and today's community. But more importantly, it will not meet the needs of our community in the future. The Recreation Center in Glendale is not for the Glendale people, Armenian people. Most people comes around of Glendale, from Burbank, North Hollywood, and from, uh, Sunland, Tonga. All of them come to the same place, and, as you know, and you meet the people, there is a lot of people in winter, in summer, they're suffering for the place. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Amercanian. Julie Feind, followed by Carolyn Young.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Julie Feind, and I'm with Lakeside Healthcare, and I'm the president of the Greater Glendale Council on Aging. The Greater Glendale Council on Aging is a collaborative network of individual seniors and senior service agency that provide access to information and resources which promote quality of life to seniors. We support the seniors in Glendale by providing funding for emergency needs not covered by any other programs, such as payment of water bills or assistance for moving expenses. This past year, our members delivered Thanksgiving food, holiday gifts to the homebound seniors served by the Adult Recreation Center. The Greater Glendale Council on Aging urged support, urges the support of the Adult Recreation Center as it's currently planned. The building was designed with much input from the seniors who use the site currently. The new center will provide much-needed additional space for activities for rapidly growing population of seniors. The senior centers aren't just a place for lunch. They play an important role in person's health and overall wellness. Fitness classes like strength training, Tai Chi, have proven to help seniors with balance and stability, which prevents falls. Activities like dances and holiday events promote socialization among peers. These can help ward off depression and loneliness. The lunch is also an important social time, and for too many seniors, it's the only meal they eat each day. On behalf of the Greater Glendale Council of Aging, we thank you for your support of the elderly persons in the Glendale community and for your vote to continue the project as designed. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Feind. Carolyn Young, followed by Herbert Milano.
Hello, I'm, uh, my name is Carolyn Young, and I've lived in Glendale for over 50 years, and I've, I'm a licensed clinical social worker, and I've been working with the older adult senior citizen for the last 30 years. In fact, so long that I am now a senior citizen myself. And I have been, um, I've been on the, I've been a past president of the Greater Glendale Council on Aging, and I'm still on the council with Julie. And for the, I've started in, in 2002, when we were looking at designs for the senior center back then, and they have changed. In fact, I've, I've heard that there, um, we've been looking at this for 16 years. And, you know, in my, in my, uh, journey of being a, um, a social worker, I worked in Pasadena for a while, and I've worked for the last nine years in Pas, in Burbank. And in those two cities, they have hubs of a beautiful senior centers where people can gather and congregate. Glendale does not have that. In fact, I have friends now that have been, um, been able to retire, and what senior center are they going to? They're going to the Jocelyn Senior Center. They don't feel that the Glendale Senior Center meets their needs. It doesn't have enough space for them to congregate and do the things that they want to do. Nobody has really mentioned that we need to look at the baby boomer. I am the first of the baby boomers, and I'm going to be hopefully retiring one of these days, and I would like it to be a place where I could go before, um, I'm not here anymore. So, I really want you to consider, um, also, I wanted to say, too, we have the Americana. We're trying to build our image in Glendale. We can't leave our seniors behind in a, in a senior center that's getting, actually it's getting smaller and smaller. One of the buildings that we used to have our meetings in is now gone. I don't know what happened to it, but it's gone. So the, the center itself is getting smaller. We need to keep up with the city image like the, um, the Americana is like, like Pasadena, like Burbank. We need to do something for our seniors and ourselves. I see a lot of you are in my age bracket and, um, and might want to come down and maybe do something at the senior center, so there. Thank you.
And just what age bracket would that be?
If you'll say, I will.
We won't discuss the numbers. Uh, Mr. Milano, followed by Nancy Kabota. I believe Mr. Milano has a PowerPoint, of course.
My name is Herbert Milano. Mayor Draymond, members of the City Council and city staff. Uh, the, the need for the Adult Recreation Center was initially identified in 1994, so it's been 14 years since we have been looking for a, a senior center that would provide the needs, um, of this community and as well as an ability to, for us to be able to fulfill the needs, as expressed in many of the documents that the city has, primarily the land use element, the strategic plan for the arts, the, um, planning divisions, community facilities element, the recreation element, the open space and conservation element. If you guys read this document- And if you guys read these documents to some extent, you will see that there's an additional need that we need to fulfill. The park, it stated in those documents, includes the construction of a series of landscape and sculpture gardens, multi-purpose lawn areas, fountains, stage, and public performance areas, walkways. The park is envisioned as the central public social performance and meeting space that enhances the surrounding buildings. Parking concepts, to reclaim areas of Central Park that have been paved over, that is stated right here in January the eighth, two thousand and two, signed by Mr. Quintero, and Mr. Weaver, and Mr. Yosefian. Those were the goals. The completion of the marketplace parking structure has eased the demand by providing a location for employee and patron vehicles. Develop a relocation of surface parking to subterranean parking. In nineteen ninety-eight, presented at several commission meetings, input received was employed by the division staff to redefine the requirements of this plan. The current plan needs new input from the Arts and Culture Commission, Parks Commission, Transportation, Glendale Presbyterian Church, Holy Family, and other stakeholders, because it impacts the green spaces that we have. Now, I had planned for you a five-minute presentation, but due to a two-minute cut-down, I'm not able to present the whole idea. But the concept is that we could have both, a quality senior center and the preservation of the last three acres of open space that we have south of the one thirty-four.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. Nancy Cabota, thank you. And then followed by Andrea Curial.
My name is Nancy Cabota, resident of Glendale. I'm usually up here asking you to not do something. Well, I have to tell you, about nine months ago, I accidentally found the senior citizen facility. And I have to tell you that I, this is a gem in Glendale. And I'm asking you not to, to not cut anything back in the senior citizen facility, to fund it totally. I go to the exercise class every single morning, from five days a week. And if you think it's easy, it's not as easy just because it's for seniors. There's probably people sixty to ninety in this class. And even the ninety-year-olds can do better than I in some of the things. So I'm asking you, it's truly a gem, and I see so many people that I know would be isolated and lonely. Sitting outside in the gardens, I think are beautiful at that facility. And I'd really like you to fund it, if possible. I think you'd be doing a, a great, doing a great thing for the city of Glendale, and I appreciate it, and I appreciate you actually even having this facility for people such as I to use. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cabota. Andrea Curial, followed by Rosario Montano.
My name is Rosario Montano.
Excuse me, one moment. Artie, can we stop them? What happened to Andrea Curial? Is she no longer here? She left. Okay. I'm sorry, Ms. Montano. Go right ahead.
The reason I am here, because this is the time, I'm sorry I have to say that, do something for us. We are seniors, but our building is, for so many years, lose, you know, too old. And I do exercise class, and the room is so small, and we need more space, you know, for enjoy as the lunch, you know, because we are seniors, we are alone, and we need company, we, we have to enjoy with the friendship. And I think, you know, we need something really feel more comfortable, you know? We bought, in exercise class, we bought a fence. We bought because we did the money for buy that, because in those times, we didn't have air conditioning. Now we have, but it's still, you know, like I said, the room is so small. And we need something really different, we can enjoy, where we feel really more free, because it's too small, so many people. And the dining room needs something different, too. Because if the only senior center looks like that, and Pasadena, Burbank, and another place, they lose different, they have more, more rooms, more teams where they have, you know, enjoy. So I, I beg you, you know, I beg you again, say, do something for us, please, okay? I hope so. We can get it, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Montano. Barbara Jean Entz, followed by Bob, I can't make out the writing. Hugent, maybe?
Mayor, councilman, agency staff, and audience. My name is Barbara Jean Entz, and I'm a senior, not a senior residence, but I'm a senior resident of the city of Glendale. I have worked in the senior center, and I frequent the meal site. I go to the other building. As has been mentioned, we have two, twos, two buildings. I very much appreciate this opportunity that you have allowed me to speak here about the senior center. I very much appreciate that we have a senior center in the city of Glendale. It means a great deal to us seniors. There's one issue, although I can support many of the issues that have been brought up to you so far, and one especially is that I think we should have one building. Everything should be in one building. It is very inconvenient to have, to go from one building to the other. Secondly, our meal, our meal site, I believe, I'm not sure, is very important to me. Our meal site building should be improved as much as we, as we can possibly afford to improve it. And next is the plumbing. I would say just tear it all out, you know? Tear, I would say tear down both buildings. The plumbing is, I have worked there, I've cleaned there. It, it's, it needs to be capped off. It's very old. So take that into consideration, if you would. And I would, this time, like to ask your permission to speak next Tuesday, to bring up and suggest a homeless, non-senior drop-in center. It seems, and the reason I'm asking that...
Let me just interrupt for a moment and say that you, your time is up. However, you're welcome to come back on any Tuesday night and speak during oral communications, as long as it isn't an item that is agendized. In other words, if you want to speak on a topic that is not specifically on our agenda, you can do that for five minutes at our oral communications.
Okay, I would appreciate that, but this is on the agenda, because our senior center is currently being used as a homeless drop-in center. And we're very vulnerable.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Bob Hugert, Hugent, I'm sorry about that. I, it's the...
I just wanna speak up in favor of the tennis courts.
Can you say your name for us?
Bob Hugert, H-U-G-H-A-R-T.
Thank you.
The tennis courts are due to come out, I guess, in Central, at Central Park. We lost the two that we used to have in Pacific Park when the school district and the city revamped all that area. So we're down, we'll be down six tennis courts, all told. That's not, that's not good for those of us who wanna get some exercise. So, so that's, I just wanna make, I just wanna bring that point up, that we're losing too many tennis courts here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hugert. Margaret Hammond.
Good afternoon again, gentlemen.
Good afternoon.
My name is Margaret Hammond. I, I guess I'm a senior, one, many seniors in this city. I don't go to the senior center. I guess I just have too many other things. I have to come here and aggravate city council all the time. But at any rate...
Everyone needs a hobby, Margaret.
That is a hobby, believe me. But I do, I am in favor of retaining the tennis courts. I always have been. I feel in that area of town, there's no one, nowhere else. You're talking about putting in all kinds of apartments and condos and all that type of thing, and I'm sure they're not gonna provide tennis courts. And if they have children, these tennis courts would be very, much more used than they are now. I do feel that we need more open land. In other words, if you're going to put in a senior center, build a new one, I think it should be all in one building, two-story. And I would like to see as much paving and cement kept out of there. I hope you learned your lesson of Pacific Park. If you didn't learn your lesson of what you turned Pacific Park into, nothing but a cement paving, paved lot, then go ahead and do it again, because that's, it's ridiculous. We need that Central Park. We need that three acres. It's in the middle of the town, it's our last piece of land for open land. If you do away with it by building all kinds of stuff on it, we're, how are we ever gonna get it back? We can't. You have a building that fronts on brand. You're gonna just knock it down as a walkway through to Americana. A walkway from where? I mean, I, that was something I couldn't, I keep looking at and thinking, we're knocking down a building just for a walkthrough? But at any rate, I still feel that instead of using up all our green space and building buildings here and there and everywhere, I'm not saying that it isn't needed the seniors. I remember when that senior building was built, brand new. And we thought at the time, hey, this was great. We were doing, you know, a good job. And particularly since I hear that at Americana, if you walk on the grass, they tell you to get off it. I don't know. I've heard that from two different people. I've gotta prove that one out. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Okay. That was our last speaker card. That leaves us a little bit of time for some discussion and getting some questions answered. And I know my colleagues have comments and questions. Let me start on the left side here with Mr. Weaver. We'll work down.
I have no questions, just comments. This location was not my pick for the adult center. I thought it should have been down on the corner of Colorado, on a smaller footprint than it is now, so we'd have more green, open space. We could have put the tennis courts on top of the building and saved all the tennis courts at the location, but I lost. That's not the building now. But I have to understand, the plans and specifications are done. No more changes to be made. What we're doing here today is authorizing staff to advertise for the bids, so we can start the demolition by the end of the year, get construction going. The only other thing we're being asked to do here is a funding option, whether you wanna segment it or do the whole thing. Knowing that tomorrow's costs are gonna be more than today, then I'm for option one, doing it all at one time and getting it done. It's the least we can do for an increasing number of adults, senior adults like myself. I do fit, at sixty-nine, I fit.
Should we even, for clarification, may I ask, when you say you're for option one?
Yes, according to staff report.
Okay, but according to the agenda for those who are, which...
Let's see, which one, redesign, plus, D is the redesign, I'm not for that, so...
He's for two A.
Am I saying B and C?
I think you're for two A, is that the idea?
Using A's.
B and C.
Yeah, two A and...
Two A, B, C.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Quintero.
I also am not happy with the site location. I just thought I'd go ahead and add that. We're not discussing that today, but I do think a better choice would have been the, the site that one of the speakers mentioned on Brand, which would have faced both the Central Park and Brand Boulevard. That would have been a much better idea for a senior center. However, that is over and done with, so we're here to discuss the current design. And I do like the design itself. I think it's a beautiful, beautiful building that is going to serve Glendale seniors and everyone else. It's gonna serve the Parks and Recreation Department really well. It's gonna tie into the rest of the neighborhood, and so I'm very excited about the design. Not the location, but the design. Now, I have a question for the staff. The redevelopment money will be coming, I mean, this is money that's currently in the bank, so to speak. Where are we getting the two million dollars funding?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council and redevelopment agency, in two thousand and two, when we put together our financial strategy and issued bonds, you set a policy, the council and agency set a policy, that we would set aside three million dollars annually for discretionary projects, if you will. This would fall into that category. So from a cash flow standpoint, the agency has that money now. We would ask that it become an advance on the, the policy that you had, the set aside money, but we have it available now for you, for the use in this project.
In terms of qualifications, this could only be applied to the, the monies could only be applied to the central redevelopment zone or the surrounding neighborhoods, or could it extend to San Fernando Road project area?
Mr. Quintero, generally it has to be used within the project area or close enough so that it provides a net benefit to the project area itself.
Okay. And on that note, just a clarification, in the staff report, we said that the, the park is within the project area. It is just outside the boundary adjacent to, so you'd have to take another step, but, but it's very easily...
There's a nexus there.
Very easily done.
For the Parks and Rec staff, the scenario involving the elimination of the weight room, does that, and billiards room, does that also mean the elimination of an exercise location, or could that be done in another, in another location in the building?
Councilman Quintero, what we would do is we, we would relocate that function into another area in the building. And we have that on screen, we can show you exactly where, but that's what we would end up doing, and we would relocate it to another area. We'd lose that space, but figure out what we can...
So it would basically be two thousand square foot less, but making a grand total of what? If the two thousand's eliminated, what, what would be?
It would be about sixteen thousand square feet, sixteen-five instead of eighteen.
So the center itself would be sixteen-five, sixteen thousand.
Right, it would be smaller by two thousand square feet. Although, having said that, you know, that also has implications for the funding, for the county grant funding as well. One of the things we didn't mention here is that there's a possibility of losing that seven hundred thousand dollars in county grant money. So it would almost be a wash unless you really take a larger chunk of the facility out. As you recall, we had two-point-eight million from the county, seven hundred thousand of that was grant money that was competitive. And last time, we had three county representatives sitting here watching their money. So, and it went from thirty-two thousand square feet down to eighteen thousand, if you recall. I know Mayor Dreamin wasn't here at the time, and I don't think Councilman Najarian was either, but, okay. So they really had a, you know, we really had to convince them to allow us to, to reduce it from thirty-two thousand square feet to eighteen thousand square feet. I'm not sure what, what would happen if we reduced it any more than that in terms of the seven hundred thousand. I think we'd lose it. So really, the savings there for that one option is almost negligible.
Councilmember Najarian.
Okay.
Actually, I should say redevelopment chair, Najarian.
Thank you. And I just wanna agree with Mr. Quintero. I think he and I were both pushing for the Brand Boulevard location, the current site that's being vacated by the Great Carpet Company. The, the advantage to that was that we would have a, a much larger green space, but I know that's a discussion whose time has come and has passed. My, let me ask the question, George, the current square footage of the buildings that are being used?
They are in your report. It's twelve thousand square feet. Twelve thousand one hundred is the current square footage of the two buildings combined.
Okay. The, the proposed, without carving any out, is about nineteen thousand?
It's about eighteen thousand seven hundred is the new proposed. With some outdoor patio, it's about nineteen thousand one.
If we lose the billiard room, that's two thousand square feet down, but we stand to lose the nine hundred thousand in savings, would be offset by the seven hundred thousand of lost?
Plus redesign with fees for the consultant to redesign, so really, that, that could be almost up to two hundred thousand for the redesign of the facility. So there are some costs in the reduction that may not necessarily be offset by.
So that's pretty much a wash.
Yeah.
The, the money that Mr. Lanza fame is talking about, that Mr. Quintero raised, there's a two million dollar gap currently. But is it in the bank, or that's gonna be for future, collected from tax increment?
That was tax increment.
No, actually, Chair Najarian, we have it in our unencumbered fund balance.
It is in there.
It is. So if you were to, if the agency decided, and city council decided, we would establish a hearing that you'd need to make certain findings, it's of benefit to the project area, and that... So if you were to, if the agency decided and City Council decided, we would establish a hearing that you'd need to make certain findings, it's of benefit to the project area, and that there, there are no other ways to fund it, and that it would truly help eliminate blight. We would put that in front of you, you could make an appropriation.
But Phil, I think the question may be, there is tax increment money that you all voted for, can that be leveraged against future tax increment? Is that the question you're asking?
No, I'm just saying that, that we're not using future money to pay for this.
Well, again, policy decision for you to make, what staff would, would suggest is, it would take about $300 million in assessed value to be able to set aside 2 million in tax increment, the 75%. That you said, let's set aside, the policy we said, let's set aside for parks and libraries. We're saying, what we're suggesting is, if you want to use this funding, take that as an advance against that future increment that would have gone into the parks. Again, it's a policy decision for you to make. You could, you could use the money and say it's not an advance, continue to make that contribution.
Are there any other projects that we could use that money for?
Of the aquatic nature, Mr. Chairman?
You read my mind.
Really? That, that is, again, it's a policy decision for the agency, we could use it for just about any public facilities or public improvement project that would benefit a project area.
So potentially, it's money that could be otherwise used for an aquatic complex or the Pacific Park pool, which isn't fully funded yet.
Again, we need to, we would need to look at where the location is and from what-
I mean, we'd have to have a nexus to the development area, with those, with those provisions.
That's correct.
If I may, although I think we've looked at some, some potential funding for the pool, and, and we still think we could identify some, but we'd like to use this redevelopment money for this, if we can.
I mean, basic, basically, let's cut the jokes, I wouldn't want to backfill 2 million here if in any way it risks funding our pool, which is at Pacific Park or even the larger aquatics complexes that we're squirreling money away for.
And these welding goggles relate how, sorry, Mr. City Manager, you had your hand.
The, the point that Phil's making is, you can cross that bridge when you come to it. This could be a rationale, by funding this now, this could be a rationale if you wanted to, if you wanted to deviate from your policy, to take 2 million dollars and use it for something that isn't recreation-related or parks-related if you wanted to, but you can make that decision at the time.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Yusefian.
I want to make a very short, I think time has come for us to build that center, it's taken too long, number one. Number two, I am for the project as-is, built it. We don't build senior centers every day, so built it. And there was a speaker, which I wrote her name down. This is Montagna. You don't have to beg. We owe, we owe it to the senior citizens to provide a, I know, I know. You don't need to beg us, it is our duty to provide you that place. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, anytime there's time to make motion, I will move for-
All right, well, let, let-
Two A.
I'll call on you to make the motion.
Right. But no, I'm not going to vote for the C, which is-
So you're, you're supporting basically a two A?
As-is, and transfer the redevelopment money.
That's two A plus the transfer, yes. Okay. Let me make a couple of comments. I also made a note, Mrs. Montano, about your, Antano, about your comment, it is quite touching, do something for us, you are so right, you are so right. It goes hand in hand with Ms. Preisler's comment, yes, we are kind of a glum, scary bunch up here, aren't we? I agree, but we, we all try to get along anyhow. Anyway, getting back to all of this, I'm curious, because I wasn't here when this train got, this very slow-moving train got rolling. But a train is a good analogy for me, especially as I watched Mr. Milano's comments, looked at his presentation. It does feel, at this stage, to me, kind of like, you know, having arrived at the station just after the train has pulled out, and, you know, it sounded like a good idea to catch the train, but now it's down the track, what do you do? That's the feeling I sort of have. And I observed the names on the report that you showed from 2002, and I noticed that neither Councilmember Najarian's name nor my name were on there. I tried, but I didn't make it. But in any case, I, I am curious for my colleagues, if time, if time could be stopped in its tracks and the clock rolled back, I've heard a couple of council members say that they, they would have liked to have taken that property that were, what is, the carpet, Great Carpet Company, and include that into the, into the project. But I'm just curious, so, at the time, who did support that?
Just Mr. Quintero and myself, I believe.
I see.
I was down on the corner of Colorado.
Okay. Well, it's a shame, I would have too. And if we had the opportunity to do some redesign right now, that's exactly what I would advocate. Because I think this could be a, a better project than it will ultimately be, but I am persuaded by the fact that we have folks here, senior community, and by the way, I was complaining last week, folks, that I, I just got a letter from AARP welcoming me to the age bracket, and I thought, my life is over. I have some reassurance now that it is not, from hearing all you, so, but in any case, tennis facilities, it does bother me that we're going to take those out, not just because I spent a lot of my years playing competitive tennis through college and so on. But it, it does bother me that, that's, that existing facility, which is perfectly usable, is going to go away, and we don't have an immediate place to replace it. We talk about Fremont maybe, but that's not really the same geographic location. And I don't know whether it will pick up the, the total deficit that we'll lose there, that does bother me. I wish there were a way to preserve a part of that. If what Ms. Kent is saying is accurate, to lose that for a drive-up area or a drop-off area really is, is a shame. So I have to also ask my, some of my colleagues, so, in Mr., Mr. Milano's presentation, he spoke about, he showed us a number of documents that talked, that talked about walkways, fountains, sculptures, performing areas, subterranean parking, et cetera. What happened to all that since 2002?
Time.
Well, I know time, but what happened to that concept, is what I'm asking. Time didn't get rid of the concept, something did.
Let me answer. I think there, there was a master plan for Central Park, this was never part of that. That's a second phase after the senior center is built. Then we're going to go in and do the, it's going to be, the park is going to be greened, but we have a master plan that we're going to be working on.
So the, what you're saying is the future plan is to provide walkways, fountains, sculptures, performing areas, subterranean parking?
Well, the future plan is, is to do community outreach process and do a master plan process for the Central Park.
Mr. City Manager?
What we talked about as we worked our way through the Adult Recreation Center and those many meetings you all had laboring over this, was a vision for the library, Central Park, and ARC, that envisioned at some point, when the opportunity arises, the potential for underground parking under the existing, what would be the new park area, Adult Recreation Center at Central Park. Elimination of parking around the library and that green, tying in the Central, the Central Library with Central Park, the ARC, the passageway, at that point in time, implementing that vision for the Central Park, Library, ARC, passageway facilities. But that all depends on opportunities that arise and funding that arises to make that happen. Underground parking, as you recall, we talked about, potentially doing underground parking under most of the Central Park area. For that purpose, not investing what I would call millions of dollars in the vision for the green space at Central Park, only to then have to tear it up at some point in time in the future, if the opportunity arose for underground parking. So instead, greening Central Park, we called it somewhat of a minimal greening plan, lots of turf, trees, but not the, not the eventual full vision for that area that I think everybody would like to see. And then as opportunities arise, look for ways to pursue the bigger, broader vision.
Well, I just, but just, so the, and I thank you both for the clarification, but just so the public doesn't get the idea that this was just some nebulous kind of, maybe someday we'll go look for grandma kind of thing. This, this particular document is a report on the status of the Glendale Adult Recreation Center project, specifically that project, that talks about parking and the subterranean and, and performance area, stage and public performance area, fountains, lawn areas, multipurpose lawn areas, sculpture gardens, a series of landscape and sculpture gardens, et cetera. So, I, I just, I just don't want to lose sight of that altogether, and I wanted some explanation of how that, projects change, I understand, and they can morph, and availability of funds change and other things change, but I just didn't want to give the impression that this was somehow never the idea, or that this was just some nebulous idea floating out there that never applied to what we're talking about. Yes, Mr. City Manager?
It's another quick comment, that, that master plan did not take into consideration availability of funding. Frankly, that was a significant part of that vision, that I was always concerned would be lost, because that vision requires a tremendous amount of capital investment. The underground parking in particular, which we've always anticipated, could be realized probably only in conjunction with some private development along brand, that would then also contribute and provide some of the economic underpinnings for it.
Mr. Quintero.
Well, the way I see it, while we are waiting for that great Central Park, in the meantime, when those buildings are taken out as this project proceeds, we're going to take a huge first step towards greening that park. So upon completion of the Adult Recreation Center, the rest of that Central Park, I think, is going to get a big makeover, it's going to be green, it's going to be a great place for people to go, there'll be events that could be held there. So while we're waiting on the other, there's no reason why we can't-
Make use.
-go ahead and make use of, of that green space, and then we'll, we'll hopefully soon come through with a, with a total revamp. We can certainly do something in the meantime, and I think we'll change the character of that, of that park, the new building, along with the, along with the green that, that'll sort of get redone, I think will be a great first step.
Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mr. Quintero, Mr. Mayor, along with that, another perception I think gets created because some numbers are quoted. The amount of green space, turf area, park space, as people think about it, will actually increase with the construction of the new Adult Recreation Center. Now, some will say yes, but the cost of losing tennis courts, all of this is a balancing act. But if you're adding up numbers for amount of green space and turf available for people to, to sit on and picnic, the amount of green space actually increases.
One more thing, I'd like, in reference to the speaker's comment, could you give us a quick update on the tennis courts and where we are in the overall?
We have several options, we're going to be bringing back to within a month, the options for Fremont tennis court, and that was part of the mitigation plan. When we were here, the council asked for a central court concept instead of, so we're looking at that, and we'll be back within a month.
Okay, that would be wonderful, Mr. Chapchan. I guess my message, for whatever it's worth, is that I think the vision that my current colleagues, plus my predecessors who were here on the council at the time, were discussing, was a good vision, a very good vision. And as we proceed through the whole concept here, or through the whole project here and this process, I think that it would be a shame to lose that vision altogether. So to the extent that we can implement any of this, I think that, that is a, would be a wonderful thing. I don't know how that would happen at this stage, but I, I commend, I commend you all on the, on the vision, it's just that a vision that never finds its way to fruition is not very useful for the public. Anyway, now, Mr. Yusefian, those are the ends of my comments. Mr. Yusefian, you wanted to make a, a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to move two B for the council. Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second, on item two B for council, is there any other discussion or debate on that? There is not? Mr. City Clerk.
Councilmembers Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Yusefian.
Aye.
Mayor Draymond.
Yes.
Two C for the council.
Second.
Mr. City Clerk.
Councilmembers Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Yusefian.
Aye.
Mayor Draymond.
Yes.
Two A for the agency.
Second.
Your call.
Agency members Draymond.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Yusefian.
Aye.
Chairman Najarian.
Yes.
Move to adjourn for council.
Second.
We are adjourned.
Move to adjourn for agents.
Second.
Agencies adjourned.